Welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Lowell Ence is the chaplain at the Federal Transfer Center in Oklahoma City. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Griner if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Please bow with me. Lord, we thank you for this city of you have raised up for such a time as this. We thank you for these leaders who are called to guide our great city in an honorable path. And, Lord, today, please give them your guidance to respond to today's challenges, your wisdom to plan for tomorrow for the benefit of others, and a listening heart and a gracious heart. And, Lord, from your very words, we receive this blessing. And God is able to make every grace overflow to you, so that in every way, always having everything you need, you may excel in every good work. And for that, we thank you, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is that time of the year when the ghosts and goblins start coming out, scaring all the little kids in Oklahoma City. And we're going to talk about trick or treat and Halloween. I'll ask Wendell Whizzenhun, our Parks Director, to come up and remind our citizens, we have at least two large events taking place in Oklahoma City. Pumpkinville is taking place at the Botanical Gardens. And for a small fee, you get scared by scarecrows and ghosts and all sorts of gourd displays. A lot of fun for all, I am told. And then the annual Haunt the Zoo, which is Wednesday through Halloween in the evenings after it gets dark, 6:30 to 8:30, but extremely safe and well attended. And we have a lot of zoo personnel out there as well, and they're handing out candy. And so I urge you to take your kids or your grandkids out to one or both of those events. And I'm sure there are others, too. We have a proclamation. We are officially declaring Halloween on October 31st. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Press, Halloween is a time for jack-o'-lanterns and the annual appearance of ghost goblins and strange and mysterious creatures. Whereas our city's children celebrate Halloween by dressing in costumes and visiting homes in their neighborhoods to receive traditional holiday treats. Whereas the annual Halloween activities provide an opportunity for people in our community to become better acquainted. And whereas it is important to our community that children be allowed to enjoy these traditional activities, but that measures be taken to ensure the safety of the children and protect the rights of homeowners. Now, therefore, Matt Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim Thursday, October 31st, as trick-or-treat night in Oklahoma City. And he encourages children and adults to cooperate in limiting the time of activities to the afternoon and early evening hours. That households indicate their willingness to welcome their neighbors by turning on their porch and exterior lights. That youngsters only call on homes so lighted. And he asks the cooperation of all citizens, young and old, in making this a happy and safe occasion for all.
Let's show our appreciation for all who are going to participate in Halloween this year. Wendell?
I would reiterate from the resolution that if you wish to be visited at your residence by the children, please leave your light on. If you wish not to, please leave your light off. But regardless of that, we're all responsible for helping the children be safe that evening. So as motorists especially, let's be very, very careful as we drive in our neighborhoods and around town that evening. We can expect that the children will not be as careful as we'd like. So it's up to us to take care of the children. So please, let's all remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's show our appreciation to Wendell. Thanks, Wendell. I remember when I was a kid, I was astonished that school was not out on Halloween. It seemed like that should be an appropriate day. Kids shouldn't have to go to school on Halloween.
Probably more so the day after Halloween.
Yeah, that's probably it. You're right. Call the meeting to order and move to item three of the council agenda. It's an appointment of Matt Gilery to the Urban Design Commission. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. For A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for October 15th. Item for B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for October 8th.
Move the items.
All right. Comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, we've got several here this morning. Starting on page eight, there's a confession of judgment on page eight under item 6A I 1. 6A I 1, it's a Bradford Law claim, and we ask that that be stricken. That's on page six, on page eight, 6A I 1. And then moving to page 14, under item 8G1A, 2900 Majeris Avenue, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Item C, 2438 Southwest 21st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. And moving on to item 8H1, item A, 10226 Oxlow Court, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll recess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are five items.
Move the items.
Comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, two items.
Move the items.
Comments or questions here? All right, we'll note that some members of the golf commission, Steve Carson here representing Lincoln Park, and that this allows us to get a little more involved in the digital revolution involving tee times. And people could reserve a spot on our golf courses digitally than having to show up in person or make a phone call. So it's a step toward making it easier. Cast your votes on the PPA. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the claims and payroll today. Cast your votes. Passed. Adjourn OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket.
Move the items subject to individual consideration.
All right, are there any individual considerations?
Your Honor, I have a few minor questions. Clarifications, if I may.
All right.
On number A, number D, and item, please, item L.
All right, anybody else, James?
I have a comment on AE.
Okay. All right, Pat, you want to get started?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is on item 6A. This is a contract award and approval for a river debris collection. And who pays for this? Is that a city answer? Is there a river trust authority?
I believe it's paid for by the Drainage Utility, is it not? Yes, paid for by the Drainage Utility.
Okay, thank you. And item D?
Item D.
This is a project to purchase or upgrade a police bomb robot. A good project.
Chief McDonald's here.
Well, the question I have is, you know, with the, it seems like the lack of frequency of bomb scares in this area of Oklahoma, has there been any effort to combine Oklahoma City's bomb defusing skills with some of the surrounding communities, Nichols Hills, Edmond, Norman, for instance?
There's no effort that I'm aware of to combine squads, but we do provide responses to those other entities that do not have a bomb squad whenever they have an issue. We work with the Oklahoma Highway Patrol, with the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office, Norman and Edmund PD primarily. They are the ones that have the bomb robots, and we all work together to provide responses to the entities that do not have that capability.
Chief McDonald, I don't mean to belabor the point, but, you know, we've talked in years past about some combination of some of the services around here. And it seems to me that bomb squad operation would be a great starting point to provide a unified countywide or multi-citywide effort to address bomb threats. Anyway, just a suggestion that we want, maybe want to investigate that.
Yes, sir, I can take that information back to the chief.
Okay, thank you. And item L is a series of street improvement projects, and they were awarded to one contractor, and there were 10 projects in there. And it seems to me that that process, although it may result in slightly lower bids, slows the issues down considerably because the contractors tend to work sequentially. They don't have enough forces to go out and work all of them at the same time. And it seems like that our citizens are inconvenienced, save a few dollars, and they would maybe rather have the dollar spent, get these done a little quicker. Is there any kind of a process in place where you could suggest that?
Thank you, Councilman. I think if you look at these, this is actually residential resurfacing. And even though there's a list of a number of projects, they're all within the same neighborhood. So these are all in the same location. So we've packaged these just for convenience. As contractor works with the neighborhood, they, the neighborhood, will see one consistent face on those streets as they go from street to street, making those resurfacings. It covers about a half mile of area that is covered here. So we are looking at that and being careful that when we do package projects, that it's most appropriate, I think, for the type of construction.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
James, item AE.
Yeah, this item is an agreement with Oklahoma Disc Golf Foundation to install a new disc golf course at Deleese Park. And I just wanted to kind of comment on it and say that it's going to be a good thing for Deleese Park. It's the area that they're going to be putting it on has not been used for anything positive for a really long time. And so I think this will just be good for it. And wanted to, it'll be the second course at Deleese Park. And so it'll be a good thing for everybody who likes playing frisbee golf. So that's it.
Agreed. All right, any other comments or questions about the consent docket? I know we have a Frank Barnes presentation.
We do.
All right, let's hear that.
Frank is here to talk to us about a resolution authorizing the city to accept a $1,800,001 federal FEMA grant regarding safe storm shelters, storm shelter rebates.
I also have a citizen here on the plan six G.
Thanks, good enough. Okay, good morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you very briefly about the city's Safe Room Rebate Program. Next slide. As we know, tornadoes pose the greatest threat and risk to the city of Oklahoma City, the surrounding communities, and really most of the state of Oklahoma. It causes injuries, death, and property destruction on multiple occasions over the years. And up there on the slide, you see to the right a list of some of the more recent events we've had in Oklahoma City where we've had tornado impacts that have caused property damage, death, and/or injuries. Next slide. When we talk about a residential safe room, there's some misconceptions about what that is. And for purposes of this program, a residential safe room includes any above-ground or below-ground shelter which provides near absolute protection from tornadoes for families that shelter in place. And the Federal Emergency Management Agency has established guidelines for the design and construction of those safe rooms and shelters. Next slide. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which is funding this Safe Room Rebate Program, is authorized by the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. Hazard mitigation grant program funds are awarded to the state following the issuance of a presidential major disaster declaration. HMGP funds are for all kinds and types of hazard mitigation, which would include, say, from rebate programs. Funding for this project comes from major, from Presidential Major Disaster Declaration known as FEMA 4117, which is also the events that occurred in May of this year. The grant provides a 75% federal and 25% non-federal cost share. In this particular grant, the property owners will be paying the 25% non-federal cost share. Next slide. Okay, the rebate is $2,000, not to exceed 75% of the cost of the safe room construction or installation. The rebate may be less depending on the actual cost of the safe room. So if you put in a $3,000 safe room, we calculate what 75% of that is for your rebate, but it cannot exceed $2,000. So the most you could ever get is $2,000 rebate. But as the slide indicates, you could get less depending on the total cost of your safe room that you have installed. Next slide. We began accepting applications for the program way back in December of 2011, when the council authorized us to proceed with the grant application. Between December 20th of 2011 and February 15th of 2012, we received 3,332, about one too many numbers up there. Anyway, it's 3,324 applications. And the demand for rebates exceeded the available amount of proposed grant dollars. So we selected the addresses through an electronic lottery system that was developed by information technology. And the goal was to have 63 safe rooms per ward for a total of 504 addresses. Next slide. The grant approval process is complex. There are many steps, including review and approval by Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management and review and approval by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. One of the key parts of the review and approval process is the federally required environmental and historical preservation assessment of each property. This is why we have to select the properties before we can turn in the grant application, so that we can perform that environmental and historical preservation assessment prior to turning in the grant application. Then, when FEMA does their review, they do that process again. So each property is assessed twice, both by us and then by FEMA. The timeline of where we started, where we're at today, we started this process back in December 20th of 2011 by accepting applications. In March of 2012, we did an electronic lottery, selecting 504 primary and 304 alternate addresses for a total of 808 addresses. We sent out voluntary participation notices, which are required by FEMA, to each of the 808 homeowners. And we began our environmental and historical preservation assessment process. In April, we had 665 of the 808 homeowners who had returned their voluntary participation notices to us. And in May 2012, we submitted the application to the Oklahoma Office of Emergency Management. Next slide. In August of 2012, we were notified by Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management that there were no HMGP funding or they're available for our program. And our application was basically put in the queue, waiting for available funding. We notified homeowners at that time that there was no funding for the program. Then in May 2013, we had our severe weather, tornadoes, and flooding events resulting in a major presidential disaster declaration, which authorized hazard mitigation grant program funds. In late May, FEMA began reviewing the grant applications that were in the queue. We were number 10 in that queue. We moved up to number one because we had an adopted and approved hazard mitigation plan in place, which as council had approved back in June of 2012, as well as a well-put-together application. They went ahead, FEMA went forward with their review and approval of our grant application. We received that grant approval packet in August. We notified the 665 homeowners that the grant had been approved and sent them a questionnaire to see if they still wanted to participate. 451 homeowners returned their questionnaires, indicating they still wanted to participate in the program. Once the grant is accepted, we send out a notice to proceed to the homeowners. Homeowners can choose a safe room of their choice, a contractor and vendor of their choice, and have it installed. The homeowners pay for the safe room in full. Right now, the homeowners have until December 31st of 2014 to construct and install a safe room. We pushed out the timeframe from what we originally envisioned because we knew that homeowners were telling us that they were calling vendors and contractors and being told they couldn't get on the schedule until May and June of next year. So we wanted to give everyone ample time to get those installed and get on someone's schedule. After the installation or construction is complete, the homeowner returns to us their paperwork and supporting documentation. We review it, calculate the amount of the rebate, and then the homeowner will receive their check within two to four weeks. One of the differences with our program versus other communities is our city is able to front the money, we're able to provide the checks much quicker, and then we seek reimbursement from FEMA at a later date. Any questions?
Questions for Frank?
Your Honor.
Yeah, Pat.
Frank, would you think there'll be any more money available after the storms we had this spring?
There's more money coming into the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. There are other safe room rebate program applications out there that are still in the queue, waiting to be approved. So it's unclear how much money will be left. We'll have typically three years to, not spend that money, but three years to get a grant approved from the date of the disaster declaration. So we'll have to kind of see what money's left when we get about 18 months out, see how much is still in there, and whether we want to apply for another grant.
If there is money, additional money available, will you go through the same process, lottery process?
We'll have to go through the same process that we did. If we do a new grant application, we'll have to do the applications, we'll have to do the lottery, and then the environmental historical preservation before we can even submit the application.
So assuming everything worked out well, it would be a couple, three years before a homeowner could actually have a shelter.
Yes, sir.
Using this program.
If we go for a second grant application, it could be several years before we would have that grant in place.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yeah, David.
If we do get additional funds, I would like to make this request. Otherwise, there might be a recall on my election. To at least consider, instead of spreading the number of grants among the wards equally, to look at the history of where those tornadoes, the more severe ones, have occurred. I think there's a difference within the city as to where a tornado will more likely occur again. And I just think we need to take that in consideration.
Whatever direction the council gives me, that is how we will operate the program.
And then the second point, this is really directed for those individuals who are in the process of considering rebuilding, especially down in South Oklahoma City in the Moore area. Now, this is a layperson speaking, so you'll have to take that with a grain of salt. But in visiting with home builders, the Central Oklahoma Home Builders Association, and other people who are knowledgeable of this area, there's been a lot of emphasis on how you construct homes to make them withstand tornadoes and improve your chances of surviving. Really, when it comes down to a direct hit, even as small as an F3 tornado, the only thing that can really guarantee that is a below-ground type shelter or possibly a safe room. So the efforts to make the home more sturdy, they're great. But if you're really concerned about, you know, your personal safety and those of your family and friends, you really have to look at these shelters to provide that kind of, and I hate to use the word guarantee, but assurance that you would survive a direct hit. Because all the efforts as far as putting additional latches on the framing to connect to the roof and connecting the frame wall better to the foundation, it's helpful, it's good. And if you have an indirect hit, you know, you might withstand that. But there's no guarantees as to where those tornadoes are going to occur. And if you are unfortunately hit by one, you really need either a below-ground or a shelter or above-ground safe room to improve your chances of survival. Thank you.
Pat?
Your Honor, has there ever been any consideration of putting requirement on new home construction to include a shelter in our ordinance?
It's been discussed.
But it hasn't moved anywhere. Have the discussions included the home builders?
Pat, I've met with them individually, and they're reluctant to have those types of requirements. But, for example, the newest addition that we approved here from a zoning standpoint within the last couple of months is going to require all builders within that addition in Ward 5 to include-
I've talked to a couple developers who have, and some home builders who feel the same way.
Yeah.
They've included it in their homes, just a matter of fact.
Absolutely.
And their position is it increases the cost of the home, maybe $3,000, $5,000, which the average price is over $100,000 now. So we're talking about a relatively small increase in price.
Correct.
When a new home is being built, to include some kind of a safe room or underground protection facility in that house.
And, Pat, just to further that, if you're going to construct one at the time of constructing the house itself, you can actually lower the costs as opposed to once a home is built to add something to that. So, but I do think in this instance, and I've talked with quite a few, it's best to allow the home builders and the public to require that on their own as opposed to having ordinances that would require that.
Yeah, but I know if we're going to enforce it uniformly, if we're going to get the result uniformly across the city, it's going to have to be some kind of ordinance driven. Because as much as the home builders and the fellow who's buying the house will discuss, unless there's a requirement to do it, they will be reluctant. Because we had this, you know, there's been the same experience occurred in Florida, because they've increased the construction standards there.
Right.
And it was done by law rather than just suggestion.
Right. And often, you'll hear discussions about what's occurred in Florida, but there's a significant difference. The wind speeds-
I understand the difference, but the parallel I was drawing was the requirement to do it versus the doing it voluntarily.
Yeah. Yeah, Larry?
Yeah, just one comment, Frank, see if I'm on the right track. Should a homeowner right now decide that he or she wants to put in a safe room and does it, and then we get some more funds a year down the road, they cannot apply those funds to the safe room they've already put in?
Correct. Yes, that's one of the unfortunate aspects of the federal regulations, is that you can't put one in today and get a rebate later. Because of that environmental historical preservation assessment requirement, that no federal funds can be expended on a property until that assessment has been completed and it has passed that assessment.
Are there any state programs in place, Frank, that are similar to this?
The Sooner Safe Program, which is operated by Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management, is still up and running. I don't know what their funding is. I don't know what their long-range plans are. But we're encouraging people to apply to Sooner Safe because as that program gets funding, whether it's from FEMA 4117 or it's from pre-disaster mitigation funding, there's still an opportunity that they could get a rebate.
Frank, thanks. Any other questions for Frank?
Could we get some kind of a copy, Frank, of the process? Because I know I had homeowners' meeting last night, and the issue came up. It would have been helpful if we could have passed out something to them.
The process to apply or the process once you put one in?
Well, the process to apply with a footnote that once you put it in, it's yours. And you can't apply then for, it has to be prior to-
We'd be happy to get something to you.
Okay. Frank, thanks. We have a citizen who has signed up to speak, and there's something on the consent docket, Michael Strega. Morning, Michael. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Strega, 6601 Whispering Grove Drive, Oklahoma City.
You indicated on- You indicated on your sheet you wanted to talk about 6G1 and 2, which is a plat in Ward 3, Larry.
Yes, sir. I found out Thursday that the finalization was today. I'm within the 300-foot zone. Never got a notification. I talked to other homeowners, they never got a notification. Our homeowners association never got a notification.
Notification of what?
Of the finalization of the plat.
Is that typically notified?
Finalization of the plat, Bob, can you come up and help me here for a minute? It goes to the planning commission, doesn't come back to council.
That's correct. There would be a notice at the final plat, planning commission, there's no notice for this acceptance, counsel.
I never got one. Anybody else has never got one. I was one of the, I was the first resident to get into this Section 2, and at that time, I was told that plat 3 would have cul-de-sacs in the area, and the minimum square footage would be 1,700 square foot. Looking at the new plat, there is, on Bentley, there is an avenue that goes into a vacant, well, not a vacant, but the property next to us. So, that was a redesign of what I was given when I first purchased, and that was one of the reasons why I purchased here, was because it was supposed to be a closed community. No other additions would have access to our community. And that's one of the reasons why I'm asking for a continuance for 30 days, so I can make sure that no changes have been made to our bylaws for property of less square footage. So, I'm asking for at least a 30-day continuance on this, so that I can do research, because I didn't even, wasn't notified of this was coming up.
I'm going to need some advice here on how to handle this.
I believe the notice area for the plat is still, is 300 feet too, isn't it? They would have to check the notice that was submitted to see if, whether or not you'd be within that notice area, whether your particular lot would be within the 300-foot notice area, so you would get, would have gotten notice of the plat.
Right. Well, I have a, our vice president, who backs up right to that property of the plat 3, was never notified.
Didn't get notice.
And I live across the street from the item within the 300-foot zone, and nobody on Whispering Grove Drive had got notification.
If notice is invalid, and Bob's folks will have to check on that in their file, but if it's invalid, basically, they would have to redo the final plat.
That's correct.
It's invalid.
We could defer it for two weeks, and we can check the file.
Well, there's two issues here. There's an issue regarding the notice requirement, and if you didn't get notice, that's wrong, and you need to do that. The other issue is deferring the plat. The plat has been approved by the planning commission?
That's correct.
So, all we're doing today is accepting the irrevocable letter of credit and the right of ownership.
Right.
But if the, if the plat, if notice wasn't properly given, the plat's invalid.
Okay.
So, we probably ought to determine that first.
Larry, are you comfortable with a two-week deferral on that?
Yeah, I am, but there is one caveat. Every house within 300 feet does not have to be notified. Is that not correct? Isn't there just a number of houses that have to be notified?
No, in that.
Or is it every house?
Radius, every property owner.
Every property owner.
Right.
Okay. I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. I'll take that as a motion for a two-week deferral on this item. Are you going to seek legal advice here on dealing on this plat?
Not at this time. I wanted to find out what my options are, because, like I said, I had, was given by the original developer that had staged Section 3, sold it to somebody else. And during that time, plans were changed, and no notification was given that plans were changing.
Yeah. Seems complicated to me. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Did we get a second on the deferral?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes on the deferral.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mark Grubbs, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
I would like to speak to this item if possible.
Sure, I need your address, Mark.
It's 1819 South Morgan Road.
Okay.
The notice was given out at the planning commission stage. It was given approval at the planning commission stage. All property owners within 300 feet would have had to been notified. We put up a, you know, a letter of credit on this property. Construction, we've got improvements in, paving's going in. At this time, we put up, my client has put up a letter of credit on this property as ordered to speed the process up, so that lots are ready to sell when the paving is complete. That's the reason for bonding or putting up a letter of credit. You know, it's, that puts, they've spent money to do this on the assurance that this was going to go through, and now this is going to stall the situation. If they weren't notified, can they not just appeal the plat at a later date?
Plat's invalid if the notice was, is not proper.
It would be invalid whether or not this council accepted the plat at this time.
You would have to start, start over at the planning commission.
I understand, and that's whether, that's irregardless whether or not this council moves forward with this item.
It's totally up to the council whether or not they want to go ahead and accept these items now, and if you accept them now, and it's subsequently determined the plat's invalid, then basically, the action has no effect.
I start over either way.
Right.
So, if we go ahead and accept this today, and they do, and the staff does check the notice, they were notified properly, then I have to start over at planning commission anyway. So, I ask that the council go ahead and accept this now, staff go ahead and check on that. If that's the case, we go back to planning commission. But we did order notices, we put, we provided notices to city staff, so I would assume that they were put out.
Quick question. Do we require certified notification, or just notification from development services or notification from the developer?
It's regular mail. The applicant submits the ownership list, we prepare it and mail it, but there's not certified mail required.
I don't see, I'm not sure I understand your argument that you start over either way. It seems to me that if we continue with two weeks and find that the notice is accurate, we vote on it in two weeks, and you're right where you would be if we voted on it today. I can now start over.
No, if my paving's done in two weeks, then my plat would be filed two weeks prior. But if you vote on it today, and, okay, let's say you vote on it today and it's accepted, then my plat is filed two weeks prior to when it would be filed, if we wait two weeks. If you don't vote on it today, and either way, we find out whether or not the notice has been filed, I'm just two, I'm just set back two weeks. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but it seems to me, if there's a question raised about whether the validity of it, it's up to us to check into it. Two weeks does not seem to be a reasonable, unreasonable time to me to look into whether notice was proper. Not my ward, but I would tell you that I, if it were, I'd be, I'd be, I am in support of the motion to continue for two weeks, because I don't see how we, if it's, some questions raised about the validity, I'm not sure why we wouldn't just take two weeks and look at it.
The only reason to accept it now would be they want to go ahead and proceed.
Well, no, I understand.
Right.
That's obvious. It's money, it's about money, but I mean, it seems to me about, it's about the rights of the, of the people that are there. I mean, that's, I guess we can.
They would be taking, they would, if you accept it today, then they'll take action based upon the council's acceptance to go ahead and start putting improvements in and spending more money on it. So, they'd be taking further actions in reliance to the council accepting that, then we would have to deal with after the fact, if there is a problem, releasing the easement and releasing the irrevocable letter of credit.
It would seem to be a lot more complicated to find out a week from now that notice wasn't proper. Then we would be in a situation where we'd have to undo a lot of things.
Improvements are already in. I mean, they're already constructed.
Well, you're not going to have to dig them out. You submitted the notice. If the notice is invalid, that.
You caused, you caused the problem if the notice is invalid.
I guess.
Because you submitted the ownership list.
The city's not going to sign the plat until staff goes back and looks on whether or not the notices have been filed. So, it's just, either way, I have to go back to planning commission, even whether you've, whether this council votes on that item or not. So, if my client puts up a certain amount of money to get that letter of credit, well, if we stall it two weeks and we did in fact file those notices properly, then my client's just wasted money. I mean, that's the process that the city's put in place to allow a plat to move forward.
So, you're going to go ahead and move forward with the plat during the two weeks before we determine whether or not it's valid or not?
No.
Basically, that's why you want them to accept it today?
If the council accepts it today, then staff looks at it tomorrow, and then I'm still not going to get a signed plat. If notices were invalid, I'm going back to planning commission anyway, is my point.
In other words, if you accept it today, and Bob tells him tomorrow that the plat's valid, he will then go ahead and proceed, and it won't ever come back to the council again.
And if we find the notice isn't valid, then he'll have to go back to planning commission, start the process again.
And then we'll have to receive your act, rescind your action, accepting the letter of credit and release the easement?
My concern with that is if you go back to and see if they were distributed properly, but yet none of us got notified, he's already got approval and already started. There's no, there's no way for you guys to back out and say, you know, if you guys say, hey, yeah, they were sent out, I got everybody on that list that we never got anything, he's already got approval, and he's already making, you know, there's no way I can come back and sit there and say, well, you guys said, well, yeah, they were sent out. Right now, I'm saying I haven't got them sent out, I didn't receive anything, the neighbors haven't received anything. If you approve it now, he's already started, he doesn't have to go back to the commission, where if we then say, you guys say, hey, they were sent out, we can then come back as a community and say, you may have sent them out, but nobody got them. So, but then now, whereas as us, we're out of luck because you've already approved it, and we have no recourse of action to stop anything.
The ordinance doesn't require that they receive a notice. As long as we went through, he submitted a correct notice and we mailed it, that.
That's correct. It all depends upon whether or not their notice list is correct or not, and who does the mailing?
We do. Development Services does. So, if they receive it or not, doesn't factor in on the, an effective notice, that if we've, he submitted a good app, a good notice list and we've mailed it, then we've met the ordinance requirements.
You met the ordinance requirement, but what happens if somebody in the office, I'm not going to go where, but what if they accidentally did not send out those notices in a timely manner, or it just didn't happen, and then the residents didn't get notified of the changes? What, what avenue do we have then?
That's a question of fact. At that point, if Bob checks his records and determines that his office sent out the notice and that the notice list submitted was correct.
Right.
Then, from our standpoint, the notice would have been properly given. So, then it would be up to the property owners to get their own attorney and challenge that based on, well, you're an allegation that there is, has to be some problem because nobody received the notice, or whatever the facts are. Basically, the burden would be on you.
Yes. But what I'm saying here is, once you determine that, you're giving me two weeks for the city to determine whether or not the notifications were sent out, but you're not giving me any time, if you approve it today, to go back with legal action, I'd have to bring legal action to stop it at the point that it's at now, well, wherever we determine that proper notification was sent out.
Yeah, I think we've explained it as well as we can.
It's really up to the council.
It's not going to be any perfect solution to this.
Right. I'm just asking, I'm just asking for the two weeks, just to give, two weeks is not going to hurt them, anybody gives us the opportunity to do something within two weeks. We had a homeowners association meeting Thursday, and they weren't there to let us know.
Thank you. Larry, do you have a preference?
Well, the way, Kenny, I'm going to need some legal advice. I'm sorry, Mayor, I got to have the legal advice.
Why do you think I don't want to decide?
Okay. If we go ahead right now and accept this, and then determine that the, that notification was not properly given, and I understand from your definition, notification properly given, Bob's people are going to have to show that they got a list from the developer, that that list was used to prepare mailings, and we have some type of record that those mailings were turned over to the post office. If we have that, our hands in effect are clean on this, and it's the responsibility of the homeowners to take any legal action to say foul ball, this is not right.
We'll verify that the list was correct. Bob's people will verify that the list was correct, and that we apparently mailed it.
Okay. Now, if we go ahead and approve this then, okay, we're still going to do that check, and if we determine that this was not accomplished correctly, then everything we've done and everything that the planning commission has done up till now is null and void, and has, they have to go back from ground zero and refile the final plat again.
That's correct. We'll, we'll bring an item to council to rescind your action of accepting the revocable.
Right.
They'll go back to.
You rescind, in two weeks, you would have an item on rescinding your action of today if you vote on it today.
Okay. So, I don't see how this puts, how does this put the gentleman at any more risk to do this, for us to go ahead and just to approve it today, the acceptance?
It, based on what he said, it doesn't give him the two weeks to then take some action if he disagrees with our determination.
So, the two weeks does protect, protect him?
The homeowners.
The homeowners.
Correct.
Okay. In this case, where are we, where are we proceeding? Do you need a motion?
We have a motion in a second on a two-week deferral. You can withdraw that motion.
No, I want, I want that, I want that voted as is.
All right. Any other comments or questions from council? All right, we're voting on the deferral. That item is deferred for two weeks. We have a motion in a second on the rest of the consent docket. Are there any other individual considerations from council? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket.
Move the items that have been considered.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Any individual consideration on the concurrence? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Move on to item 8. These are items that require a separate vote. The first is a zoning case in Ward 2. It's an ABC issue at 315 Northwest 23rd Street. Is the applicant here?
Move the.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 1222 North Pennsylvania Avenue. Meg?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This is an ordinance to permit alcoholic beverage services in association with a taqueria at 122 North Pennsylvania Avenue, and I would move approval.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on item 8A2? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward 3. The address is 4250 South Sarah Road. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become an R1 single-family district. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant here? Abba, question, sir. The amount, the amount of traffic that this new development is going to generate was a consideration at the planning commission? And was something committed to that would be handled, the plating revolving traffic?
The applicant committed to, after 65 lots are developed, they'll put in the traffic light in the left turn lane at that intersection.
And that'll be at the intersection of Southwest 44th and Sarah Road.
That's correct.
Okay, based on that, I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes on item 8A3. Passed unanimously. Item 8A4 is a zoning case in Ward 8. The address is 15912 North MacArthur. It's currently a planned unit development, and it would become a single-family residential district. Pat?
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Phil, would you come to the podium, please, and give us your name and address for the record, please?
Good morning. I'm Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the.
I'm Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there questions from the council? Why is this a PUD instead of just a straight zoning change?
What, originally, this was a lot larger PUD. And throughout time, portions of it have been rezoned and obviously developed with the subdivision to the north. So it's kind of the scraps left over from what was a parent track in an original PUD. And there's some verbiage in there that makes it a little bit confusing and not really applicable to this specific site, such as you'll read in your staff report about the necessity for a collector's street and those sort of things. So really, it's leftover, and in fact, it was an agreement when we had the preliminary plat approved, we agreed to a staff TE that said we would rezone this portion as well just to clean it up. So that's the nature of the application.
Are there, are now there, are there any questions? Francis, anybody sign up to speak on this? If not, I move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item eight A5 is a zoning case in Ward Three at 11749 Southwest 59th Street. It's R1 single-family and a planned unit development, and it would become an R2 medium-low-density residential district. Larry?
Anybody signed up for this? There were no protests at the planning commission. Unless the council has any questions, I move for approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight A6 is a zoning case in Ward Five at 1616 Southwest 82nd Street. It's currently R2 medium-low-density, and it would become an O2 general office district. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this item? Okay, it's to expand the existing office for the Oklahoma Baptist Homes for Children and also add some additional parking. So it's been approved by the planning commission. I'd recommend approval by the council.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight A7 is a zoning case in Ward Three at 200 North McCormick Avenue. It's currently I3 heavy industrial, and it would become a new spud. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up to speak on this? Okay, is the applicant present?
Hi, good morning. My name is Yassina Tawee. I'm the main applicant.
If you just give a very brief overview of what, what your operation is?
My facility is going to be new facility recycling for cars. We're implementing a new program. Anyway, recycling facility provide valuable service that contributes to our environmental quality of life through the recycling of auto parts and scrap metals and conservation of natural resources. This program is designated to prevent pollution by implementing best management practices, which is BNP. In the industry, by minimizing the generation and releases of waste and increasing the competitive advantage and improving the efficiency of the business operation. BNP are used to reduce waste through better work practices, material storage, and other process management techniques.
This was presented to the planning commission, Bob? And there was no objections at the planning commission? Nobody came to speak?
That's correct. We received a letter.
We received a letter from a gentleman from a company out of Illinois, I believe, who has property here. The question involving drainage, there is drainage problems in that general area, but any drainage issues would be developed, would be handled by staff at the time down the road?
That's correct.
Okay?
Yeah, that's correct.
And this is in an I3 zoning, which is appropriate land use the planning commission agreed to?
Yes. I need to add, there were two additional letters submitted, but I don't believe anybody's here.
Nobody's here. Unless the commission has, council has some questions, I move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes on eight A7. Passed unanimously.
Thank you. I, I just have personal, thank you for, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for bringing the tender. You led the campaign four years ago, I'm in transportation business. Once you brought the tender here, helped us a lot. It made a big-time difference. I really appreciate it for all that, and I'm really grateful to live and growing up in such grateful, warm city. Also, would like to thank, to thank the zoning departments. I've been dealing with them, this is their time, and they have a very warm heart, very helpful, especially Mr. J.J. Schembelus, Lance Cross, all the team. It's been a pleasure dealing with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing that up. Item eight A8 is a zoning case in Ward Seven at 1407 Southeast 19th Street. It's currently R1 single-family and an A2 airport environs overlay district, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has anyone signed up? No, no protest? Is the applicant present?
Can you briefly explain this particular development?
Yes, sir. It's a, it's an office, basically, with a garage attached to it. My client's a painting contractor and needs office space.
Excellent. I move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes on item eight A8. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item eight B is an ordinance that would change the name of South Robinson Street for a one-block period to Thunder Drive. We have a motion?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight C is a zoning case that was recommended for denial by the planning commission. Has to do with auto sales. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Francis, is there anyone here to speak on this?
No one's signed up.
Ma'am, would you like to come forward? She spoke at the, this is the applicant's daughter, I believe? Yes. And would you mind telling the council what your plans are with respect to this?
Yes. We want to open, excuse me, I'm kind of sick. We want to open the auto sales with our autoglass.
Pull the microphone down.
And we'll need your name and address, please.
Yeah, your name and address for the record.
My name's Catherine Zepeda. My address is 4774 Northwest 23rd Street. Sorry, guys, nervous.
You're doing well.
Yes. We want to open the auto sales with our autoglass, but like I said, we do not want a ton of cars. We really don't, because I do see a lot of places on 29th Street, I do see a lot of places on 10th Street, 16th Street, everywhere all over the city. But we don't want to have like 20, 30 cars like those places, you know, because a lot of them sit there for years and it looks really bad. We know that. We want 10 cars max at a time. That's like really small. We aren't going to put any on 59th Street. We are going to have them in the back lot, because there's plenty of space back there.
That's fine. Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Now, when I watched the planning commission's consideration for this item, at first, when they unanimously rejected this or disapproved it, I thought, well, that's the right decision. And the young lady called, and I went by their shop, which is located on the south side of 59th Street. And driving out there, I thought, there's no way we need to have additional cars for sale along 59th Street. When I turned into their, the shopping center that they're located in, that shopping center is, is, is in as bad of condition as any that I've seen in Oklahoma City. It is really in bad condition, the stores, the parking lot in front of the shopping center. But the only bright spot in that shopping center is their company. They keep the autoglass repair shop spotless. I went in there, they continue to sweep while we, I walked through, and then I walked onto the backside of their shop. I've spoken with Bob. I think we can make some limitations to their proposal that would limit the sale of cars to only on the backside, that being, they own the property going all the way back to 60th Street. So it would be limited, as the young lady said, not more than 10 cars at any time. They keep it spotless. I think this is an opportunity where the city can work with a company that's trying to, you know, be successful and supplement their income. And the only question I have at this point is in regards to signage. I know the spud suggests signage up to eight feet in height, and if we could maybe limit that, that's the only thing I have a concern about. Otherwise, and I know this is going against the planning commission, but just based upon going out there and meeting the family, I think this, this would actually improve the area, and I'd like to see us allow this to go forward. But I do welcome anyone's comments from the council.
Comments or questions? You're making a motion to approve?
Yes, with some specifications that we'll agree to, if that's okay. Bob, can we, you know, we'll limit it to the sales occurring only on the backside of the facility and talk in terms of the signage?
This, this is limited to no more than 10 cars. They can only be displayed on the south side. They have to be stored either in the building or the fenced area directly south.
Correct. And it, and it also would have to be supplemental to the current operations of a glass repair shop. So if you ever ceased operations there, the cars couldn't be sold any longer.
Second. Okay. Comments or questions from council? Larry?
I mean, Kenny, I'm sorry.
Yes. On the signage, right now, it says eight feet. You probably need to be specific about that, how, how tall you would want that to be.
Bob, do you have any suggestions as far as limiting the size of any signage or the type of signage?
Well, the, the only type of sign allowed would be an eight-foot monument sign in front. They couldn't have a pole sign.
Okay.
So that, it's pretty, I mean, that's pretty typical for an, similar to an office sign.
Okay.
So I think what they proposed here is probably reasonable.
Okay.
That's the typical size, I believe.
What would the sign be?
I have one question. Also, would that be including we can fence in that back area?
Correct.
Aspire a garage is what we want.
Yes.
Yes.
Right. The question though, ma'am, is where would you place the sign at?
We haven't really thought about signs.
Could we limit it to only along the backside and not have a sign along 59th Street?
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're trying to make this a successful business, they're going to need a sign on 59th Street, aren't they?
Okay.
I can make it work in the back. It's okay.
Hey, I'm asking for some help here.
Well.
But no, I want them to be successful. And they've got.
It's fine.
I think the sign on 59th Street would be a better location than putting one on 60th Street. Because 60th, they're, they're separated from Western by the pawn shop parking lot, so it's going to be substantially off of Western where they would have, and it, and there's an apartment across the street from them to the south and, and a single-family housing right there to the west, so the sign's probably better. I, I know where you're going with signs, but I kind of have the same feeling, but in this case, I don't know how you'd get a sign that wouldn't mean anything if you didn't put it on Western.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're going to put it back in the neighborhood.
I'd say let's move forward.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item eight D is another auto sales lot request that's been recommended for denial by the planning commission, and it's in Ward Five. The address is 7220 South Western. David?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Francis, do we have anyone signed up to speak? Okay, I'm going to take a different view on this proposed automobile dealership. It's, it's proposed at a location that currently is a restaurant, and really, we are trying to limit the number of car dealerships in the I240 area, and this is just a couple of blocks north of that area. So I agree with the planning commission on denying this request and would move that we deny it also.
All right. Anyone here hoping to speak on this item? All right, cast your votes. It is denied.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Item eight E has to do with our summer schedule for council meetings in 2014. Do we have a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item F begins a series of items that come to us from the Traffic Commission. The first is in Ward Three. It's on North Sterling and has to do some no-parking signs. Larry, you okay with this?
Yes, I am. Is anybody signed up? And this was brought forth by the president of the Hilldale Neighborhood Association, Linda Palmer, and she and her officers are doing a great job trying to stabilize and improve the Hilldale neighborhood, and this is a move that they think will do that, so I move for approval.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight F2 is a no-parking anytime sign request in Ward Six. Meg?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This request came to us from Chief City and Traffic Management Division, and I would, it's really a housekeeping matter. I'd move approval.
Okay. Cast your votes. And item eight F2 passes unanimously. And the next three are also all in Ward Six. Meg, you just want to keep going? Item eight F3?
Yes, move approval, please.
Second.
Okay, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight F4?
Same thing. This is going to be related to the new police headquarters building, so move approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item eight F5?
Yeah, I did have a question about this, or maybe I want to make a comment that I've learned something, but Kenny, I hope I learned this correctly. And this has to do with parking spaces that are reserved for the physically disabled and/or the ability for disabled patrons to use our existing parking meters. I've had some correspondence back and forth with a constituent, and I understand that anyone with a disabled tag can use an existing parking meter without paying if there is not a disabled space nearby. Is that correct?
I would actually have to look at the code, but Charles might know, Charles doesn't know the answer to that. Now, we'll have to look at the code to give you the correct answer on that.
There's a lot of important information, I think, that may not be very clear for people needing disabled parking spaces downtown. And the other thing that came to my attention is that, that if you do use a disabled space, the same time restrictions apply as they would for any other parking space.
That is correct.
So that is correct.
That is correct.
Okay, so I, I think there's some lack of clarity about how all this works, and we might bring something forward to just discuss how that can be used.
We could, yeah, we could bring you a one-page memo and then with that information.
That would be great. Thank you very much. So given all that, I move approval.
Second.
All right. Cast your votes on item eight F5. It passed unanimously. Item eight G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under eight G? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight H is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under eight H? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight I is our agreement with the IFF.
Monica Coleman is here to just highlight a couple of things.
Good morning. Monica Coleman, Assistant Personnel Director. This first item is the collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, and there are five changes outlined here in the, in the council memo. This contract is effective July 1, 2013, and will run through June 30 of 2014. We have a wage increase that we are adjusting each rank according to the market survey results, and those are outlined in your memo as well, and those are effective July 1, 2013. We are also adjusting their, the city's contribution toward the cost of their health care from $11,040 per year up to $11,374 per year for only those bargaining unit employees who participate in the IFF VIBA plan. We are also expanding their tuition reimbursement program to provide for reimbursement for tuition with out-of-state institutions, provided that the, that the curriculum is fire-related. We are also limiting their ability to exchange time to 96 hours in a 27-day work cycle. And finally, if there are probationary employees who are required to attend EMT training classes... And finally, if there are probationary employees who are required to attend EMT training classes off-duty, we will pay for their time to do so. And with that, I would be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
I move for approval.
Thank you.
All right. Getting ready to vote on item 8I. Any other comments or questions from council?
There is a Scrivener's error on the summary sheet that I have.
Yes. Yes. And that is effective 2013. Yes, sir. Sorry about that.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Want to appreciate the IAF and retirees representatives that are in the room today. We have an I-8J is an agreement, and this has to do with our retirees' health insurance.
Yes, sir. This is our agreement with the Board of Trustees of the Oklahoma City Firefighters Health and Welfare Trust. And this is effective for calendar year 2014. So this will be effective January 1, 2014, and run through December of 2014. And there was a Scrivener's error in the financial impact report that referenced 2013, and that should be 2014, just so we're clear. The agreement is correct. And we are increasing the contribution toward retiree healthcare coverage from $9,842.99 per year up to $10,496.50 per year. And that's based upon the premium renewal rates that we receive from the Board of Trustees. And we do factor in the percentage that city retirees contribute toward their healthcare coverage in determining what we pay to the IFF VIBA. And that is currently 38% in this year, but effective January 1, 2014, that goes up to 40%. So that was factored in in determining the amount of contribution the city would pay toward retiree healthcare. And that is up to the age of 65. And once they become Medicare-eligible, that contribution reduces to $3,500. And with that, I'll, okay.
All right. We're voting on item 8J. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8K, understand we do not need executive session on this item?
That's correct. Do not.
Motion to strike?
We need to adopt the resolution.
Don't need a motion to strike. Need a motion to pass the resolution. Thank you. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 8L, we need a motion to approve the resolution. We do not need executive session.
Correct.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8M, we do need executive session on this item?
Would the item need executive session?
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8N, is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of the items listed under 8N?
No.
Okay. All right. All right. How about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item 9? All right. How about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And 10 is items from council. Pat, do you have anything for us today?
Your Honor, thank you.
All right. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to wish Debbie Martin a happy birthday. Today is her birthday. She would not tell us her age, but she's been with the city a long time, and she keep many of us in line. So again, happy birthday, Debbie Martin. And this morning, I had the great opportunity to attend a breakfast with the after-school network in reference to Moon, Elementary Moon Middle School. It was definitely good to see entities coming together to improve Moon. Thank you.
Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. We lost an incredible Oklahoma City citizen this last week in the passing of Leland Gorley. Leland was 95 years old. And I can't begin to list the number of things that Leland has experienced, seen in this community over the years, but also contributed. And I just want to extend my heartfelt thanks to Vicki and his family. Services are at 2:00 on Friday afternoon at the Crossings Chapel. I also had the privilege of attending a neighborhood meeting last night hosted by the Salvation Army to once again talk about their proposed campus and some of the programming at 10th and Pennsylvania. And the meeting was really well-attended by lots of staff, not quite so many neighbors this time around. But I want to thank Deputy Chief John Scully and Major Elias for being there. Planning Department was so well-represented by Bob Teener and J.J. Chambliss. And everybody spoke to the help that J.J.'d been able to offer during the course of this process. And, you know, I really feel like we're making great progress in connecting with the neighborhood and very anxious to get this facility up and running. Thank you, Mayor.
David?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to join Councilman Pettis with wishing Debbie Martin a happy birthday. For people who don't know, she, as well as the other assistants, we just couldn't do our job without their help. And she is so dedicated. So happy birthday, Debbie. Also, unfortunately, I will not be able to attend next week's meeting with the Oklahoma City Public School Board. And I do want to encourage this council to continue to work with the Oklahoma City Public Schools. An issue that I think we need to find an answer to is allowing students to ride for free on the Oklahoma City buses back and forth to school. So if we can find a way to accomplish that. And then, secondly, I would encourage the school board to try to find ways to duplicate the success that's been achieved at U.S.-Grant High School in the improvements in their academic scores, especially in the area of math. It appears that the success that, you know, we see in some of the schools is attributable often to the leadership within that school. And we just have to find a way to duplicate that so all of the schools in Oklahoma City are able to achieve the same level of success and improvement. And then finally, I do think there is significant support in the business community if the school board decided to bring in and conduct a workshop with the professors from Harvard that are focusing on the achievement gap issue. That's an effort to improve the academic performance in large urban school districts, bring that up to the same level that we're seeing in suburban schools. But again, that's up to the school board. But if they did show any interest, I'm sure the business community would be supportive of that, and we could get that accomplished. Thank you, Your Honor.
Nothing. Pete, Larry?
Just like to thank publicly David Prater, our district attorney, for coming out Saturday morning to the Windsor Hills Neighborhood Association meeting, along with Sergeant Scowell from the Hefner Division. And both were very well-received by the neighbors and gave excellent presentations on their responsibilities. And that's all. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. James? All right. City manager reports?
Couple of, first of all, we're happy to have Janine Bello, Regional Chief Executive Officer for the Central Oklahoma Chapter of the American Red Cross, and Debbie Hampton, President and CEO of the United Way of Central Oklahoma, here today to give us a brief presentation about the Oklahoma Disaster Recovery Project.
Good morning. Thank you for having us this morning. I would like to, first of all, just say thank you for the support from the city and especially from Chief City and Chief Bryant on a day-to-day basis, not even just during large-scale disasters. But our relationship at the Red Cross with the city of Oklahoma City is stellar. And it really is one that we hold in high regard and is not matched throughout the country and with all the Red Crosses that I visit with. So thank you so much for the partnership. The spring storms that happened really, you know, have, it's been a tough spring and summer for our communities. And coming together, it's not just the Red Cross, it's a lot of agencies, United Way, different folks pulling together. And I have a brief presentation that we'll go through, and I promise it is brief. A series of 19 tornadoes tore through our communities on May 19th and 20th. And then later on, we had five additional on May 31st. And there, you'll see in front of you just kind of a quick, kind of a response update via numbers. I won't go through all of them. But I will say 6,300 overnight shelter stays in 12 shelters that we operated or assisted with. The other number that I'd like to point out with is we have assisted 6,396 families through case management. And that's from the onset, and that's in the initial response phase. I specifically pulled some numbers for you for Oklahoma County and Oklahoma City addresses. The Red Cross conducted damage assessment on 6,879 homes. A little over 1,500 of those were located in Oklahoma County and approximately around 1,900 within Oklahoma City address. If you have an area of interest or would like for me to drill down some specific numbers for you, I'm happy to do that. When we talk about damage assessment, that means that the Red Cross verified some type of damage. It could be very minor to just a few shingles off, or it could be very major, destroyed, totally gone. So very wide range of different types of damage in there. Out of the 6,396 client cases that we opened, 2,345 of those cases were listed as being Oklahoma County addresses. Now that the initial response phase is over, probably midsummer, we launched into the recovery phase and long-term case management. In the initial discussions, when we decided that case management was going to be very important in the long road to recovery for these folks, the Salvation Army, St. Vincent de Paul, United Methodist Committee on Relief, and Catholic Charities, we all gathered around a table and decided that we would come together in a collaborative effort to ensure that we were doing case management consistently and cooperatively and also under one roof. And I've never seen this model anywhere else in the United States where all of these agencies have agreed to put their folks that are supporting the project under one roof. So literally, they are trained the same, they are interacting with clients the same. It is very consistent case management. And the case management is conducted on a needs-by-needs basis. And occasionally, I get asked a question, how can you justify, maybe you give someone $200 worth of service or resources, and maybe someone else $5,000? And that's really good case management. Our case managers sit down with clients and develop long-term recovery plans. And so it really is based on need. And we have folks who are underinsured or didn't have insurance at all, and their needs may be greater than someone fully insured. So our case managers are doing an excellent job. In the initial phase of standing up case management, we have three offices, one in Moore, one in El Reno, and one in Shawnee. Probably the greatest challenge we have right now is standing up Phase 1 and assessing if the volume that we have stood up is going to be able to handle the number of cases long-term. Out of those 6,300 cases, we have flagged between probably 3,000 and 4,000 that will need some type of long-term help. So we want to make sure we have the infrastructure to handle that over the next 18 months to two years. Next, please. Specifically for the American Red Cross, I just wanted to share with you that we're at $38 million raised. That's designated money that will be reinvested back in Oklahoma communities as they, as we responded and as we recover. The immediate needs of the initial response, we committed and spent $13 million. Long-term case management, we anticipate will be a $10 million project. And then we have another $15 million that we will use for long-term community needs. For instance, we have a community that lost, private community that lost a water well that we were able to go in and help. So there will be things like that that pop up. Working with the school systems, we have been working with the Moore School Systems, El Reno, Middel. And anything that they lost and is not replaced with either insurance funds or FEMA reimbursement, we're looking and helping to see if the Red Cross can step in and help. Next. That's it for my presentation specifically on the disaster response. Again, I really want to say a big thank you to the city. And also, the support that you give the American Red Cross and other agencies through the Heart of the City campaign, I really want that to be noted. It is the reason why we were able to respond. Large-scale disasters bring in donations. But the day-to-day response and the house fire that we'll have tonight or tomorrow is because of citizens and employees just like yourselves and those that work in the city that support us. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. Debbie?
Thank you, Janine. And I was asked to speak a little bit on the collaboration of the nonprofits. And I have to tell you, a lot of you know me and know that I've got, it's almost embarrassing now that I'm this age that I can go back and people say, oh, remember that disaster. But I do have to tell you, there has been a better, stronger collaboration among the nonprofit sector on this most recent disaster than anyone I've ever seen. And I do have to credit that to the nonprofits and the nonprofit agencies. Janine spoke about the case management model, but there have also been a couple of other areas within the nonprofits sector that I think is working really well. We do have what we call a PIO group that is made up of all of the nonprofit sector, not just United Way agencies, but other nonprofits that have been involved in the disaster relief efforts that are working together on their communication, making sure that we hopefully don't allow people to slip through the cracks as we start giving the messaging out of how to get help and get relief. And then on top of that, there is a group we call our CEO Disaster Relief Group. It is also made up of nonprofit CEOs that are at a different level, that are meeting actually weekly at the United Way still, discussing relief efforts and how do we better take care of our citizens and our community. And again, some of those, and I just want to mention a few of them that are part of both of those groups, obviously the Red Cross, Salvation Army, Catholic Charities, Feed the Children, the Regional Food Bank, Rebuilding Together, and Habitat for Humanity, just to name a few of those nonprofits. I've not seen that type of collaboration in the past. And so we're very excited. United Way also now wants to keep that going long after the disaster, because I think we can use that with other social service issues such as homelessness and things, areas like that, that I know that you guys are also very interested in. So I do think sometimes some really good collaborations come out of such a tragedy. I do also want to give you an update on United Way's disaster relief funds. As you know, and I think I may have mentioned before, at any point in time, you can go to United Way of Central Oklahoma's website. And on the homepage, it will tell you exactly how many dollars have come in, pledges and donations that are designated for the disaster relief efforts, and then how much has been committed. So to date, we have, the United Way Disaster Relief Fund has $15.5 million that has come in as pledges and contributions. And then we've also been asked to administer the Governor's Fund. And also, we will disperse those funds. We were just asked to disperse the funds for the Governor's Fund as well, which is the Oklahoma Strong Fund. And at this point, in pledges and donations, that fund has $4.4 million. To date, we have committed $5.5 million in services to agencies. And again, one other piece of information with the United Way's funds and the Governor's Relief Funds, those, we are not getting involved in direct service delivery, because as you heard Janine speak, we have nonprofit agencies that are experts in this field and do it every day. And so we will be funding nonprofit agencies that are United Way partner agencies and then other nonprofits collaborating with those disaster relief agencies in funding. With that being said, I'm happy to open it up to any questions that either Janine or myself can answer.
Any other questions for Debbie? David, and then Pat?
Yes. First of all, Debbie and Janine, thank you so much for all of your help with the storms that we had back in May. I remember especially the American Red Cross funding, or setting up the Student Reunification Center at St. Andrews Church the night of the tornado, connecting the students who were at the schools at the time back with their parents. And then throughout several weeks following it, they were there providing food and assistance to not only the residents, but the first responders. And we're just a great partner, as well as these other agencies that you've mentioned. So it's truly reassuring to know that when disaster does occur, we've got organizations in place to help with those who have been impacted, as well as supporting the first responders and their efforts. Just one quick comment, especially the night of the tornadoes at St. Andrews Church, you know, the police now have their amplifying systems built into their cars. And when you're inside of a facility such as a gymnasium, the ability to speak loudly, they just don't have the portable, you know, megaphones or whatever they're called. We may want to look into acquiring some type of portable sound system that, and not rely solely on the police vehicles themselves. And then, secondly, with so much of the area being without electricity, the need for portable generators, pretty large ones, to provide electricity for a facility. generators, pretty large ones, to provide electricity for a facility like St. Andrews Church, I think would be helpful. And I know we had some out there, but the lighting was still pretty dim as the night wore on. And when you have these types of disasters, electricity is often a luxury that we have to do without. So, thank you.
Pat?
Debbie, Janine, I'd best answer this question, but I had a question from a constituent about those folks who had insurance on their houses or whatever and were faced with the delay in receiving payments from insurance company. Have you all been able to help those people at all?
Absolutely. Janine can probably speak to more of that, but absolutely. One of the main areas that I think we're having difficulty with, though, is making sure we get the word out because you do have people that have insurance that feel like they're not going to be able to get assistance. So, we continually echo, please, you know, call 211. There's also a 1-800 line, but they will get those individuals the help they need.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, that if someone is having insurance difficulties, they should contact the Disaster Recovery Project and meet with a case manager because we definitely can help with emergency needs in between. We've actually also helped kind of help people walk through that process when there is a disagreement with the insurance company or a mortgage company or something like that. So, they definitely need to reach out and get assigned to a case manager.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mayor, if I could, just a quick comment. You know, it's just so reassuring to have you both here. You know, I know that you are each called on routinely from people around the country to talk about how we manage through these crises so well. And Debbie, I know going back to 1995, I know you spent a lot of time in New York and in other places, and it's really a compliment to you both, but also to the state of Oklahoma and to this amazing city that we have, you know, such a great collaborative effort and we're able to take the lessons that we've unfortunately learned here to help communities around the country. And I just want to thank you for that.
Well, and I have to, again, echo what Janine said when she thanked you for the Heart of the City campaign. It's way more than just the contributions, but it's really nice to be able to have access to the city's leadership, and we do. The minute a disaster hits, we are talking to Chief City, Chief Bryant, to any of you. And I don't know if any other city has that type of access, but it does make the disaster relief efforts work. And I love talking across the nation about the relationship we have with the City of Oklahoma City, and it's something that we are both very, very proud of. And others are jealous.
All right. Any other comments or questions for them? All right. Janine, Debbie, thank you both.
You.
Continuing with city manager reports with the Total Care.
Yes, September was Total Care Month, and I've asked Doug Dollar to give us an update on the renewals.
Yes, as Mr. Couch said, September was Total Care Month. As we've done in the past, we mailed out postcards to all residential utility customers to let them know about the open enrollment period. We also included information in the Utility Bill Newsletter as well as on OKC.gov, the city's website. We had about nine... A little over 900 customers who changed their option, either coming into the program when they were out or leaving the program if they were in. Overall, the net was about 62 customers who changed, who are actually in the program, who were not in the program before. And so, that... Our total is about 175,000 residences that are covered now under Total Care for this coming year, including apartments and single-family homes. So, it's been a program that I think has been fairly success... Very successful here in Oklahoma City. We receive very few complaints from residents. Occasionally, we do have some issues with billing, and we're able to work with them and get those resolved. I don't know if you receive other comments and that sort of thing, but from the city's staff perspective, it seems to have gone very smoothly this year.
Is the Tulsa market doing exactly the same process we are?
They do a similar process. They do it in June is their month and when citizens can opt in and opt out.
How do our numbers compare to theirs?
I think ours are slightly lower than theirs are at this point. When they originally began, Tulsa had a program where they put you back in the program each year, and you had to choose to get out, and so that kind of kept their numbers higher early on. They've now changed and are following the same model we use where once you make a decision, that decision sticks. And so, I would guess that their numbers will gradually trend to where ours are.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the Total Care renewal?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Hotel collections?
Do you have to answer any questions?
Hotel collections are up 4%.
They are?
Well, that's over... That's over target. 4% over target. Nice.
I saw that it was... There was a slight decrease in the Oklahoma City room supply. I found that really hard to believe. What can we attribute that to?
Well, didn't we close the one hotel at I-40 in Meridian?
Oh, okay.
That was... It may have been the largest in the state.
Okay, so that's...
The large hotel.
I think that's reflective of that.
Okay.
That was, but there are plans moving forward to increase that to a nine-story Class A hotels.
But obviously, there are a number of hotels coming online, almost everywhere.
Yeah, I think there's a thousand.
Well, that's what I thought, and then I saw that the actual net room was... Room number was lower. Found that surprising.
All right. Citizens to be heard. We have a couple of people that have signed up. I'll ask them to keep their comments to three minutes or less. Joe Sards Nelson?
Mayor, if I could, while Sarge is coming forward, I just had some information provided to me with regard to the parking meter ordinance. And it is clear that individuals with a valid handicap placard or a handicapped vehicular license plate may park at any downtown meter for free, but only can park there for the posted time limit. So, if it's a two-limit meter, you can park there for a two-hour meter, two hours if it's a meter. But if you do have a valid handicap placard or license plate, you can park there for free. Learn something new today.
And that's in our code?
That's in our ordinance. That's part of our...
Cool.
That is part of our parking meter ordinance.
All right. Joe?
For the record, I'm Joe Sards Nelson, and I am an Oklahoma City resident and a pain in the posterior, I guess, to the city council. This is not offensive, so don't take it that way.
All right.
Okay. This is what I've been practicing on since I left for you all. This is the part I do not want you personally to take offense to.
Okay.
All right. I drove the Zeta route, and this is what the people's calling. I think I made mention last week about Mick's folly. If you'll notice on there, all these here, I took and drove it nine times the same day and took six to six pictures. These were the best of the lot. There are five churches and six parking lots. And if you'll notice, if you go to church, some do, some don't. The churches are closed six days a week. On 11th Street, where it goes to one of the churches, I think it's the Lutheran Sanctuary, the Volvo was on one side, Mercedes-Benz is on the other. In reference to this streetcar, I'd like to make a comment. This here, and of course, given Gazette, they're due, they do a fine job with their reporting, this is the Zeta route. Unfortunately, and I'll save that comment for later, this is what you all have proposed for Oklahoma City, a streetcar. The last part, which is this gentleman right here, I do believe his name is Jeff, for lack of a better word. And this is a personal thing with me. As you can see, if you want to get a closer look, you had one here about two weeks ago. This is him in action with Number Two, Mr. Sidib, and they had a few heated words, which the mayor had to step in and kind of slow it down a little bit. But in this particular case, this young man was absolutely wrong. And the only man that could actually clear the air was him or Mr. Steve Lackmire, which I don't know whose payroll he's on, Mr. Lackmire, that is. But the man was wrong because he did state that the streetcar did have problems, didn't have guts enough to stand up to the microphone and admit it. Now, all of y'all naturally want to talk about the Zeta route. Well, it's never too late until it is too late. And I'm going to read a few of my notes because right now my eyes are getting kind of fuzzy and so is my head. Nothing personal. I've driven the route like I told you myself and to see what's good about it. And the truth is, while there might be great potential for this particular thing in the future, I don't doubt that one bit. It doesn't make any sense to me right now, or even in the near future, because it's only four and a half miles to nowhere. Now, it's a canal ride on rails, technically, just like down in the canal, to benefit the midtown developers, and the citizens were never voted on a midtown route to begin with. Now, you're going to have to let the people ride free if you're going to get any riders at all. And I do believe I asked the city manager at one time how much it was going to cost to ride this thing, and I think his words were a nominal fee. Zero is the only nominal fee you're going to be able to get paid on this thing because it don't really go anywhere. It travels by seven, like I said, parking lots and five churches, and the churches are only open six days a week. And of course, then the vote was five to three for the Zeta route anyway, and it's kind of understating a vote of confidence, so to speak. But let's don't act like Congress and all of a sudden take a little bit of break here and find out, get a little more input. Mick and this personally, don't let this be your legacy. It'd be a chain you'd be wearing around your neck for the rest of your natural life. But anyway...
Joe, I appreciate your political advice, and we are out of time, so do you have anything else you want to say?
Would you all ever... Would this body ever consider even just to kind of hold up the funding on it and tell the people to have a real solid look at this thing from all the points of view except just what you all have heard?
Joe, thanks for coming.
Okay.
All right. Kimberly Mitchell?
My name's Kimberly Mitchell. My address is 1217 Northeast 17th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma 73111. I come here today to speak about the system fare changes, the 2014 proposed for Metro Transit and COPTA as far as Metro Transit, MetroLink, Metrolift is concerned. They're wanting to eliminate Route One, Route Four, Route 20, and Route 11. I kind of made my little stop, you know, and the rates are going to go up. I ride the Metro Transit bus six days a week so I can get back and forth to go to work or appointments and other various needs, even to go to the grocery store. I don't have a car. I come today to be the voice of all people and all patrons of Metro Transit and MetroLink. I put to whom it may concern, but it is to the city council, Mayor Cornet. I appreciate this. My name's Kimberly Mitchell, and I stand here to be the voice for all these signatures and addresses to oppose the rate hike at Metro Transit, Metrolift, and MetroLink, also to save Route One for 20 and also Route 19. Route 19 goes all the way to Spencer, all the way to Dungy, and also to Mary Mahoney, where I go for my doctor's appointments. If they cut that route out, it's going to be a big... It's going to be kind of like a letdown for people who, you know, use public transportation, not to mention I can't really afford the rates that they're paying. You know, we have to pay now... We have to pay $4 for one-day pass, 14 for seven days, and for a full month, $50, and it's kind of costly. If I... If the increase goes, the fare that I have to pay is going to increase $112, especially for MetroLink. MetroLink is a curbside service which allows us to use our unlimited bus pass one day, seven day, or 30 days. They're requesting that we pay $3.50 each way when we get on the bus, when we transfer downtown, and that's $7 a day. That's $28 a week that I can't even afford to put in my budget. And I just didn't know if... You know, I called here first on Monday. I didn't know that you all were closed on Monday, but just those signatures of bus patrons who gave their names and addresses to just let you all know that rate... The rate increase for Metro Transit is going to be a big, big upsetting letdown for us, especially if you close, you know, some of the buses to combine. I do understand that we've already been, you know, used to change as far as Metro Transit is concerned, MetroLink, Metrolift, raising the rate of the age limit from 60 to 65. People have to pay a little bit more. A lot of people do depend on MetroLink, Metrolift. They're going to have to pay a whole lot more. We do have handicapped children. We do have all walks of life that ride that bus every day. I pray that you all do consider speaking to COPTA to try to avoid raising the hike. It's supposed to go to $1.75. I think we can handle that, but as far as the handicap with Metrolift, MetroLink, and also Metro Transit, as far as the age is concerned, $3.50. They're unlimited... They're limited incomes, too. Lot of them don't make a whole lot of money on their disability or Social Security. Lot of them are barely making it, as far as myself. So, I just pray that you all speak to COPTA or something to see if they can't keep the rates as it is as far as the... For us getting around. I've... I just don't know what else to say. I appreciate you all allowing me to come forth today. I really do. But to have that price rate is just going to be a big impact and a lot of changes. A lot of people aren't going to be able to get back and forth to work, to doctor's appointments, to get their... Some people have to get the bus, take the bus with their children, take their children to doctor's appointments, and we're just not going to be able to do that.
Kimberly, thanks for coming down.
Thank you so much. I greatly appreciate it. It was my pleasure.
We have executive session, and we'll be back.